Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our October 8th, 2024 Town Council Meeting. Director Phipps, could you please do a roll call?
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Winkler.
Here.
Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And if I could ask you all to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
I have got a flag back.
I was thinking the same thing.
All right. If you all have had a moment to look at the agenda today, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
A move that we accept the October 8th, 2024 agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we have the minutes of our September 24th meeting attached. And if you have had an opportunity to look at that, I will entertain a motion. From anyone?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written for September 24th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we have several proclamations. Oh, we have public, I'm sorry, public comment right now. If we have anybody who would like to speak today, we ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes, that would be appreciated. Seeing that I don't have anyone, that is fine. Um, we go on to the proclamations. We have several proclamations. Thank you. Oh, my goodness, I was panicking. We have several proclamations here tonight, and we're going to start off with, um, with, uh, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I will read a quick proclamation for October here. Whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the second leading cause of cancer death among American women. And whereas breast cancer is about 100 times more common in women than men, one in eight women will be diagnosed with the disease and diagnosis increases increase as patients get older. And whereas doctors estimate that about 5% to 10% of breast cancers are hereditary and individuals whose family history puts them at increased risk for breast cancer should discuss with their doctor or qualified health professional the proper prevention and early diagnosis strategies. And whereas since early diagnosis strategies have been introduced, the five-year survival rate for a breast cancer patient has dramatically increased, now at 91.2%. And whereas during the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested by researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. And whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors, giving us hope for a better future. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the Town of La Plata. The Council encourages all citizens to support efforts to raise awareness and increase research for breast cancer treatments, as well as to consider their own health and risk for the disease. This is signed by myself, Mayor James, Councilman Winkler, Councilman Trolinger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, and Councilman Jenkins. And the one thing that I would like to add on a personal note is I am so pleased to say that my sister is a breast cancer survivor, um, for 11 years. So, early detection does help, and we need to bring awareness to this. So that is our proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Next is National Code Compliance Month. We have a proclamation for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Okay. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety and welfare of citizens throughout the United States through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances facing various issues of building zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with the increased number of foreclosed and abandoned homes and communities impacted economically. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and application of house, zone, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the communities they serve and regularly interact with a variety of state officials, county officials, first responders, legislative boards, commissions, agencies, and bodies. And whereas code enforcement officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses of the communities in which they serve. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do hereby recognize October 2024 as National Code Compliance Month in the Town of La Plata. The Council encourages all citizens to recognize and express their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers from the Council of the Town of La Plata, Janine James Mayor, Councilman Winkler, Trolinger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Councilman Jenkins.
And a shout out to our code enforcer, Aaron. He does a fabulous job, and it's not always easy, as you have just indicated. So thank you very much, Councilman Winkler, for reading that. We do have our next proclamation is Pedestrian Safety Month.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Town of La Plata proclamation, Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas statistics indicate that one pedestrian is hit every seven minutes, and tens of thousands of pedestrians, many of them children and older adults, are hit, hurt, and killed every year. And whereas statistics further indicate that pedestrians' impulsiveness is too often a factor in the incidence of injury and death of pedestrians. And whereas statistics further indicate that drivers are not aware of or are ignoring crosswalk laws. And whereas an average of 125 pedestrians die in crashes in Maryland every year. And whereas through continued public awareness, education, and enforcement of Maryland's pedestrian crosswalk safety laws, death and serious injury can be significantly reduced. And whereas the Council of the Town of La Plata is committed to encouraging a walking downtown in the Town of La Plata, in which to help ensure a safe pedestrian environment by promoting education about and enforcement of Maryland's pedestrian and crosswalk safety laws. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Pedestrian Safety Awareness Month in the Town of La Plata. The Council encourages all citizens to look out for pedestrians, drive with care, and be aware of and comply with Maryland's pedestrian and crosswalk safety laws. Council of the Town of La Plata, Janine James Mayor, David L. Winkler, Councilman, Matthew D. Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, David M. Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you very much. And lastly, we have Walktober.
Thank you. Proclamation entitled, well, I'll just read it. Walktober, October 2024. Whereas walking is the state of Maryland official exercise. Whereas walking is known to provide physical and mental benefits that boost our emotional well-being, ease symptoms related to chronic mental health conditions like anxiety and depression, improve cardiovascular health, weight loss and sleep, reduce cholesterol and tiredness, and increase energy and endurance. Whereas walking is a critical component of well-being for people throughout our state. And whereas walking with or without assistance is an activity available to people of all ages and abilities. And whereas walking is a key element of Maryland's transportation and recreation network. Whereas, and whereas the Town of La Plata is committed to creating a walkable and sustainable community. And whereas remembering that we are all pedestrians at some point during our day. Walktober brings heightened attention to pedestrian safety in conjunction with the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's October National Pedestrian Safety Month. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Walktober Month in the Town of La Plata. The Council encourages all citizens and businesses to incorporate walking into the day-to-day lives and operations. Signed by the Council, Janine E. James Mayor, David L. Winkler, Councilman, Matthew D. Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn L. Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, and myself, David M. Jenkins, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So October is, has a lot of great things going on. All right. Brings us to our next item, which is matters of council discussion, and it is council legislative priorities. Hand it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, last several weeks, we've been talking back and forth about what the council priorities are and how we align with CGA, our partner. So we thought we would have our work session to discuss what your priorities are. Some of you have put them in writing prior, and I put a little package together. Some of you have gone back and looked at the priorities from before and made comments about that. So we're just going to have a roundtable. How many priorities do you want? Is this something that you want CGA to continue to work for us for? So it's just a general discussion and.
Open up the floor.
Open up the floor.
All right. Well, I will start. Madam Mayor, thank you, Assistant Town Manager. I am, the main thing that we need to get resolved is our water issue. I, we have engaged Cornerstone to work on this for the past three years. We, you, Madam Mayor, Michelle, Jay, they've all worked on it. We are still no closer to getting it resolved. All of these other things are great to have, but the only legislative priority I would want to see is water and us to work to build back our town staff. The confidence in our community is significantly eroded because of the number of individuals that left. They don't know why they left, and that's fine. But we know that they left. We're short-staffed. I would rather see that $78,000 go to an FTE to work on economic development. Many of these things fall up under economic development as opposed to having another agreement with Cornerstone. And I don't know who's going to work the water situation out. You've had conversations. You've been engaged. Jay's been engaged. Michelle has been engaged. Before Janine left, she was engaged. We need someone to work out the water. And I'm not necessarily saying that needs to be Cornerstone, because again, we've had three agreements, the same priorities for the past three years, and we're still no further along in getting them resolved than we were when we started the initial agreement. And that's, that's how I feel.
And if I could, and thank you for that. And this is open conversation. So we do have, we are closer to that. We did do a, Jay did an update in to let us know kind of where we were a few weeks, maybe a month ago now. And I know that you were unable to attend. They are getting closer. They have now the attorneys from the county and the town are meeting. Their next meeting is, I believe, this month, towards the end of the month. And every, every meeting, they get a little bit closer. It's the ask. So I believe that the contacts that have been made have brought us to this. The next part is getting the attorneys to agree on the, so we're at the table, which we haven't been in the past. So we are at the table. The next one is to, to get the attorneys to agree on something that they can present to commissioners and to council to agree on that. So the good thing is, it is a little bit closer.
But maybe we can have another closed session to have that conversation, because I've heard just the opposite.
Oh, so have I.
Yeah, I've heard just the opposite.
I felt like the update, at least what Mr. Gallow gave us as an update, was that there was progress, but it was by no means leaps and bounds. And my, I think my concern with the fact that, let's just, let's just say that there is progress and we're further along than where we were. That's, that's Mr. Gallow's doing, that's Ms. Miner's doing, that's your doing. That's where, where does Cornerstone fall in that part of the process? When we've got, you know, I think a pretty strong team right now working on that with direct contact on the ground, right? So I think back to Councilwoman Bryant Ward's point is, as it relates to maybe our biggest pressing need, where does Cornerstone fit with that, where we are?
That's a good question. They have brought us to the table. We had meetings with MDE. MDE is not really willing to get into, even though they own the water, they're not willing to take a stand on that. So, but we have gotten to the table with them. We've talked with the secretary. So at least we're brought, they're made aware of that. We haven't gone back to MDE yet because we are trying to work it out with the teams, boots on the ground there before going back. And their unwillingness to take a side is a little concerning, but the awareness, the contacts that have been made on that, it's also the governor's team is aware of this as well. And that is, to me, that's, that's the relationship that CGA can bring to that. Can they get an agreement for us? No. I, I don't think that was ever their goal to do that. It was to make the contacts. And they're actually the ones that just last week, two weeks ago, made the contact with WSSC so that we could have a conversation with them, because our team was unsuccessful of getting into their WSSC. So they, they literally went next door, knocked on the door, and said, the mayor's emailed you twice. Can you please email her back? And we had a conversation. So that is, that's, I guess, the power of knowing people.
Well, so before our former director of Public Works left, he had that same conversation with WSSC. He shared that information with me. And MDE has had that position since 2021. They were not going to do anything. They told us that, that we need to work it out with the county. And so we were aware of that already. I didn't know that we had gone back to them when they were clearly, you know, not going to take a side.
No, but we keep that relationship open because they may. And there's, there will be a new secretary someday, and every secretary is different. So that's, that is where CGA would fit in is for contacts. Yes.
I mean, I agree with Councilwoman Bryant Ward. For me, this is the top priority. And and I do believe in some sense, Cornerstone, or we need some kind of lobbying presence in an office. And that's, we can debate that later. But the water, to me, is the biggest issue. It is so frustrating to have MDE tell us, we don't want to get in the middle of a political fight. Well, I went and looked at their website, and I read what they're, what they're supposed to do. That is, issue, they control the water and the permits to the water. So I don't understand why, it's been, it's been eight or nine years since we've had our appropriation water permit either renewed or expanded or whatever. And I'd frankly just find that unconscionable, because what I am afraid is going to happen, we're going to get in a strictly reactive mode where we're literally are not going to have water. I'm exaggerating. But my point is being, we should not be put in a position where we're reacting. Their job and our job is to be proactive and to figure it out. I have had very public conversation with one of the commissioners, and I said to them, look, aquifers don't recognize political boundaries, okay? Your population needs water, and we need it. So, so if you don't like us, okay. And we don't like you, whatever. I don't particularly care. And I said, why can't we just get in a room and fix it? This is what elected officials are supposed to do. We fix stuff. I'm not saying it's easy because it's not. But, and I understand there's an issue with cost, and, but also I hear they're, they want to, commissioner, they want to condition it on, well, our development. I mean, I was told by one of the commissioners, well, you keep approving this stuff. This was, this was a year and a half ago. And I said, well, I don't approve it. Our planning commission does. And oh, by the way, we have the same kind of process as you do. And then they kept referring to county water. It's not your water. My whole point is, we need to get past all this nonsense, get in a room, and fix it, because we're really going to have a problem. And, and I'll, and I'll close for now by saying, I went to a session at MML this summer, okay? Westminster, Maryland, about 20,000 people. Eight, nine years ago, they were running out of water. They were bringing it in by truck. So can you imagine what that would have cost? So you know what they did, working with MDE, their delegation, and a bunch of partners, including Hopkins? They partnered, and they're developing, and it's under construction as we speak, they're going to create water from gray water. Because their system, they have an impoundment and a couple of wells. So they somehow, it took them all. But my point is, they got in a room and they collaborated and partnered, and they got people from Hopkins, they got folks from Maryland Municipal League, they got the two delegates, Senator, because MDA said, we want to help you, but we don't have the legislative authority to give you permit. Well, they, the state legislators fixed the problem. So my whole point is, that's a model that we ought to be following. It's called collaboration and partnership and being proactive and not reactive. Then there was a bill passed in the last session where I think Washington County and all the jurisdictions, they have a regional water authority, because they have towns. So they're all cooperating on water and sewer systems. I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that's the key. It's collaboration. You get past egos, you get past whatever it is, and you fix problems. That's the most frustrating thing to me. And I don't want to be in a situation where a few years from now, we're really going to have a problem. And I'm not trying to be a mongerer, whatever, but we seem, not us, we seem to be in, around here in this mode where we wait to the very last minute to fix something, and then it costs much, much more money, and a lot of pain and agony and extra thing that we shouldn't have to deal with. Again, I'm not suggesting it's easy, but, so that is the number one priority for me. We need, and that needs to be done sooner than later.
And that is going on now, but that is my number one priority as well. That is, you know, for the betterment of the community, for all of our residents. And you're right, it shouldn't be political. There should be no politics involved.
Well, it's not politics. It's saying, well, we don't like the way you develop. Well, but frankly, you're not a town councilman. You're a county commissioner. We're elected, you know, and so that's our jurisdiction. We're, we're, you know, we're an incorporated town that's been here for over 100 years. So, and we're the county seat. And it's like, it just seems foreign to them that they somehow want to control what we do and how we do it. You know, with all due respect, you need to stay in your lane, and we stay in our lane. But we should work together, because at the staff level, sometimes it works pretty damn good.
Yeah.
It has in the past. So I don't understand. So it's at the top. And so we just need to get past this stuff.
Senator Tate, do you want to weigh in on either of this?
Well, I, I think, I mean, we could sit here until, we could sit here until the wee hours of the morning and go back and forth on, on, I think we're all in unison on the water appropriation, being a, a key, a key driver in, in, whether you want to look at a 30, 60, 90, as they say, or, you know, three years, five years, 10 years, it's, we're still going to be talking about water. It's just, it's not going anywhere. I guess my question, or my thoughts on this are, you know, are, we're, we're trying to put together our legislative priorities of what we can do for the betterment of the, of the town. And, you know, we've all kind of put through some of the lists. But are, are we, it, it just seems to me like the question that in the room tonight is, is, do we want to engage CGA on our behalf or not? I think that's kind of the, the elephant in the room is, and, and, you know, I, having looked at it and, and having very minimal input and very minimal exposure, but as, as Councilman Bryant Ward alluded to, is that, you know, for three years, they've been working on these priorities. But I don't know how, I don't know where we were and where we are now. I don't know how much further we've gotten along with it. I don't know if that's the right, is that the right venue to, quite frankly, to go, you know, I, I've always been told that there's a process, and you, you know, the town goes with the county, the county goes with the delegation, delegation goes, that anytime you try to sidestep or skip over, you ruffle feathers. And, and then all of a sudden, feelings get hurt. And, you know, and egos get jaded and whatever, you know, and I do agree with Councilman Jenkins that, you know, at some point, you roll up your sleeves, and you let bygones be bygones. You go, here's the problem we got to address and fix it. I guess the question that we have to ask ourselves is, are we going to get further along with or without CGA's help? And that, I don't have any, if, if you're asking me and looking at the track record, I'm looking at three years. I've looked at the memos they sent, and the priorities that they're working on are the exact same in 2021, 2022, 23, and 24, and we're getting ready to add them on 2025. I don't know if that's, I mean, you all would be able to tell me or give me better clarity as if that was progress, or if that's just, you know, we're still spinning our wheels.
With the exception of one year, council has identified these as priorities and did a resolution saying that we accept this. It was, we had that conversation, and we said, with the water appropriation, have they taken us as far as they can? Where now, they've taken us, so we are now where we're talking on our level. They may not be needed for this anymore. They may have had all of their contacts for water appropriation and the purchase agreement down the road, maybe with WSSC as contacts and whatnot. They will be invaluable to that. But right now, where we stand, it is attorney to attorney, county to town. That's, I don't see anything else coming in right now on that. We've got to work it out on this level. So if, if that is our priority, is it a legislative priority? Or is it a town priority? And there are two different kind of things. The town is taking this. What other legislation do we need other than an agreement, obviously? But that would be between the county and the town. So that is saying, what's most important to us? What are we focusing on? And I hear, and I am assuming, Councilman Trolinger, that you feel the same way as the others do with the water appropriation being, and a purchase agreement being a top priority for the town. I don't want to speak for you, though.
I agree.
Okay. All right. So we do that. And I've heard you all say that I think that that is the town's priority. Correct? All right. What other things, what things do we see as priorities, legislative priorities outside of, okay, so water appropriation. What can others help us do to enhance the town, whether it is CGA or anybody else? The police, I'll go down my list, and I will just say, and you guys can say, no, yes, I can see it, nobody can help us, whatever. This is a conversation, no hard feelings. I put down my top priorities, and I said, a police department. We have outgrown our police department. We need funding for it. It's going to be expensive, because police departments are. Is that something that we need outside help with? I will tell you, the reason why we got the $250,000 was because of SGA and Mac Middleton. It was nothing that the town did. It was the connections going to Senator Zucker's fundraiser. We were able to secure money, having contacts there. That's how we secured the money, and that's how it starts. Can we do it on our own? Is it worth trying it on our own? But that's where I go with the police department. I think that's a legislative priority in to get funding for that. Our delegation has said no, nothing for that. So it's got to go outside the delegation.
So it's, so that goes back. Is that a legislative priority, or is that a town priority? Because it's the same thing. Why is that legislative and water is not? Then the other thing is, that we got the 250, but we don't have the 250.
Right.
We have money that we all. We have money that we already allocated from the
ARPA.
ARPA funding. So where where is the money? We talked about a million dollars somewhere and we but we don't have that million dollars. Where is the million dollars? I think our effort should be focused on getting the money that they have identified for us so that we can put it in the bank somewhere. It's not on our books. And so in order, I mean, to continue to go after things and not, you know, secure what we've already gotten makes no sense to me. The million too, where is it? We need to get it. If that's us, then our time, our team needs to work on getting that money. I don't think we need a lobbyist to get it. They've already gotten the money for us. Now we have to do our part to bring it home. I I still believe that we can have all of the legislative priorities in the world. But if our town is not functioning properly and we've got to work on it, we we're down four key people right now. And our focus in my mind is getting those people back in here so we can operate efficiently so everybody can do what they were hired to do and do it well. Pulling and tugging people from one department to the other to backfill is not good. And if that person backfills and they don't feel they have the skill set to do so, we're going to lose that person. I think we need to focus on town operations. We have you in here. We've heard repeatedly how you have been successful in rallying the team. I think we need to continue to identify operational inefficiency so that our town can be self sustainable. We've had legislative priority, they didn't make a big difference for us one way or the other. Nothing has changed in the since I've been here in 2021, having these legislative priorities. You know, we've got the tourism zone, but we don't have anything that we will be able to take advantage of that tax on. We've got bird seed, bee seed, tree city, everything, but it doesn't, it hasn't added a value to us other than getting something on our letterhead. We need to focus on rebuilding the confidence that the community once had in us, believing that our town is okay. If one more business person emails me, quite frankly, I'm disturbed about the number of turnover, the amount of turnover in the town. Why are you disturbed? It's not affecting you. Your trash is still being picked up. But I get it. They want they're wondering what's going on. And so I think we need to fix this thing. I don't, you know, spending money towards legislative priorities and energy that we don't have, we need you here. We need you boots on the ground because apparently you have been able to rally the the staff together. We need you here to continue to rally the staff together, identify how planning is going to continue to function. I'm confident that Danny is going to be fine. He's ready for the job. He's got Kirsten working with him. I think they'll be fine. But does he want to be in that capacity forever? Are we going to, you know, be able to supplement his pay just like we did anybody else for taking on a position that's not his? We've got to think about those things. And then I think we need to look at re the budget, doing a budget amendment for the positions that we don't have right now, because we're not going to start a town manager or anybody else out at the salary, the people who were here for 30 years left with. We need to look at the budget and see how we reallocate the budget and do a budget amendment. Those would be my thoughts about how we move forward for the rest of F Y 24 to get F Y 25 to get us ready for F Y 26.
And you know what? You make some really valid points and things are moving forward. We have been constantly talking with Danny and he is ready to shine. And he has the support. We just had a great conversation with him today, but he knows that he has resources here. We have made an offer to a town clerk and she should be coming here. Now it's going to be November 4. We have a planning person that someone that has more degrees than I know what to do with that is taking over the planning department.
Interim.
Yeah, interim until the new town manager comes in and he or she can hire someone. So we are moving, we are moving forward. Yet are there obvious holes? Yes, but people have stepped up and it's amazing to see. And we are in constant contact every single day to see what is needed and if there is any burnout. Planning Department is doing fabulous. We have also on per the the council's request and insistence, we have, which is the right thing to do, we have an engineering firm that is on call for anything that we need. So we've got it going on and it is just maybe not obvious to everyone because their titles are not, you know, filled yet because we have an acting director of Public Works and we have a 1099 person coming in for planning. And we have a town clerk, we have an acting town clerk right now that is wearing two hats, but we do have a town clerk coming in. So those operational things are moving forward. If we don't, you are so right. If we don't have a solid base, nothing else matters. So our foundation is solid and we are just looking to for permanent directors to fill some of those spots, but it's moving forward. So that is should be our number one priority.
I can't say that it's solid. We it's stable.
Stable is a better word.
Solid would be that we have permanent people in place, ready to take ownership of these roles and move us forward better than what we had before. That would be the thing for me.
I'm going to let Michelle weigh in.
Whoops, sorry. We hope to have those, we're not even looking at filling those positions because that is the responsibility of a new town manager and they will be working directly for for them. So we will help as we get closer to hiring a town manager. We may start the recruitment process. So when they hit the ground running, they can start from these positions. And we've also hired an I T.
Oh, that's
Cyber security. She will be coming before the council in the next several weeks with a closed session presentation that will you appreciate.
Thank you, Ms. Minor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I echo Councilwoman Bryant Ward's concerns. I think in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we've been able to utilize knowledge and expertise from some of the vendors that we work with to identify state grants and opportunities outside of C G A's efforts. Not saying that C G A's efforts weren't weren't helpful, but I know Councilwoman Bryant Ward and I have talked about helpful opportunities Mr. Hendricks found in the past as it related to Route Six, as it related 488, the bike path and so forth. And I think effective use of our department heads and with a collaboration strategy and maybe using an F T E or a full time person to try to identify department needs for grants may be a better allocation of resources, especially with not very long ago, we got a very dark and stormy forecast of our budget in the future. I feel like having a lobbyist is a luxury. It's I think it's helpful. But I think going back to the basics of blocking and tackling, so to speak, and and reestablishing kind of department first, using our vendors is probably more fiscally responsible, given that we try to get a modest increase to a lot of our hardworking town employees. And it was as though, you know, the bottom was going to fall out is was what the response. And how can we now justify paying a lobbyist the same amount as a full time employee that might lessen the burden on our staff? And that's, that's kind of where I struggle with this. And I, you know, I've said in the past, you know, I'm involved in organizations that we have to have lobbyists or our occupation is at risk and our clients are at risk and there is no way around it. I think there are other resources available for us to accomplish the same goals. So that's where I come in.
Thank you for that. One thing I didn't address, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, when you had asked where the money is for for the grants that we have received, we did, as Bernie said when he was here, we did through him. He made the contact for us to get that ball rolling and our treasurer has been able to contact that they have received our request. We still don't have the numbers yet for F Y 25. That still hasn't been published for anyone. So that has been put, that process is there. Have we? Yeah, have we gotten that yet? We haven't, but it is taken as far as the the town can take it. It's there now that they have to release that. And then we do have, again, the contacts through S G A that made that happen because it sat for years undone. So that's where I just wanted to make sure I didn't. Yeah. Okay.
I I I would just, I guess, I'll offer an observation from Councilwoman Bryant Ward. You make a great point about stability and and I would agree with that assessment by saying, you know, we were drowning. I think now maybe we may be treading water. But but I would just, I guess, have a different, a slightly different view of that. Yes, we need to stabilize and but I also think in past years, we also have to be able to look forward. And sometimes we haven't necessarily done that. So I don't know what that balance is. Right now, we're out of kilter and we got to fix the one part first. But I would just offer the hope that that we would also need to be aware of what's out in the future. Because again, I don't know what the budget numbers are going to look like when we meet in January. And I know initially I I said, you know, that I think lobbying is important, but I hear what the fellow council persons are saying and I understand now that maybe it is, I don't know, maybe it is a luxury. And to be very frank about it, I I'm just, and it's not their fault, but our some of our elected officials really could care less about us, to be very blunt about it. And so I don't know how you change that. I I just I'm perplexed and just don't get that however. And that's not their fault. But so maybe maybe we just need to. But I do like the idea of leveraging our consultants. For instance, we got a federal grant, right? 300 and X thousands of dollars. Great. So my for future discussions, so who's going to do those studies and use the money before the feds come back and say, You didn't use it and we're going to take it back?
For the bike path?
No, 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 we got a federal grant for that 301 and community is the federal money, State Street or something we got a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a that's a big deal. And because I I've gotten an earful in 10 days about speeding and Clark's Run.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
I get the traffic.
And that's a fair, from my views, that's fair. So all I'm saying in the context of what we're talking about now and people we need, again, we we don't want to lose that opportunity to deliver those kind of grants, particularly federal money. But they're going to audit us, they're going to say, You don't use it. We're going to pull it. So I'm hopefully we can find people to actually do something with it.
I think we go back to the strategic plan. When you talk about looking forward, we go back to our strategic plan, we capitalize operations, go back and we can continue to look forward. We still have the 550,000 that the delegation did give us for D C for the Dorchester Community Center. I've identified that money, just got to figure out how we get it.
We Good.
Deborah told me for sure.
We have not, and they may have supported that, but in since 2013, looking at what the delegation, I mean, it's it's in print what they put, looking since I went back as far as 2013, there is no indication that we received anything. I think that they were supportive in putting it into the to get it to the budget and we did get 500,000, but I it was not earmarked from delegation 28 at all. I think that they were instrumental in helping us get that. But if you look at the budgets and I I know you've done a deep dive in it, too, you will see in the budget, this at the end of every year, it will say, This is where it went.
Well, I mean, I went back.
We didn't, we didn't follow up on it.
No, no, it it would still be in if it was awarded.
Talk about it.
Yeah.
I was going to say, if it was awarded. Davis and to someone else that could see the money, just got to figure out how we get it.
I mean,
Great. That's another.
Bernie mentioned those state funds are administered by the Maryland General Services Administration. Okay. So I went to their website and I had and I went back to 2020, 2020, 2021, where they list all the grants of projects they awarded. And we're in there three or four times. And then there's a number associated with it, but I can't find the actual physical document. But there's a contact number. I have not called them because I didn't want to jump out of the chain of command. But that really troubles me that four years we got this money and so so where is it? Because I understand, I mean, you correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't use it, they're going to come back and say, they're going to yank it. And I think
We have to draw down on it.
Well, yeah. And I think, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, he said, They're trying to recover the funds.
So they call it drawing down. So they have to do a process. There is a process that Karina is now very well versed on.
Well, we can recover it because.
If you have information about an outstanding grant, I would send it to our treasurer because she can give it to Astraea to to look at and that because if there is money out there that we have been awarded, that's kind of a slap in in our in their face if we do not draw down on it. So thank you for that. I guess what we're looking at, when you guys are saying this, too, and we're talking about being stable, one thing that our treasurer has brought up several times because we do have all of these projects, she says, just like you said, Councilman Jenkins, who's managing these? When they come in, who's managing these? And one of the things that we were talking about just recently is she says, We do need a project manager, one that is dedicated to all of that, that is experienced, experienced in construction, experienced in grants. We have, Kristen is doing a fabulous job down at Public Works as a project manager down there, managing what's going on there. But we may need to look at someone that does the big umbrella on that. We do have a lot of things out there. We've got just even going down, down my list that I I put as priorities. We've got the police department that has money, Parks and Recs that we're looking at wills, D C C, Main Street, we're doing, of course, water appropriation, and I always go with stormwater, but we've got a lot of little things going on. Perhaps it's time for council to say, just like we've heard before, we wanted an I T person, we got that I T person. Maybe that's where we concentrate our priorities, too, that hiring a project manager to do these things.
Feel like that's a little difficult to assess when we don't have a town manager. I mean.
That's true. That's true. But but and that is going to be for the town manager, redefining the town manager's position. That's going to be a conversation that you will have next week or the week after. And that is a great, we're at a moment that we really can define what we think a town manager of a of a town this size should do and should be capable of doing. And that's what that's a great process to go through. But looking down the road, maybe putting in F Y 26, a project manager going through the budget, because hopefully we'll have a permanent town manager in place when we're going through the the budget cycle so that they can say, Yeah, that's that's cool or no, you don't need that, you can redefine this way. What? What other, so I hear a number one, water and town operations. Is there anything else that we should be setting our eyes on to have? Maybe if it's not C G A, having the staff concentrate on through either Astraea or each department head? Where are we moving? Or are we just staying? Making sure that we're above water until we get a permanent town manager? What does council see going for the next six months, eight months?
Well, basically, you're you both are telling us that we can't move forward until we have a town manager to hire these people because they will work for him. So then you have to tell us because we're not involved and it's not our job to be involved in daily operations. We've been clear, the three of us have been clear to stay on our side of the fence. And so with that being said, the two of you are here trying to build the bridge in the gaps of services that we have with the lack of employees that we have. So you have to tell us where we're going since you're telling us that we can't hire. We're not going to hire a planner because we need Because we need water to continue construction, to get that revenue and so that we can do other things. And so you guys have to tell us how we're going to move forward if we're not going to hire these permanent people.
We, we could hire permanent people, we could. I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think that the right thing to do is have the new town, town manager do that. But if it's the will of the council, and I'm speaking as, now I'm going to speak as mayor and not a town manager. If that's the will of the council is for the betterment, we are here to advocate for all of our residents. If, if collectively you think that a search should go on right now, then that's what we do.
Well, it was my understanding that we were doing them simultaneously when we signed the agreement with the research firm. I thought we were trying to do them both at the same time. But if not, no worries. Here's the thing, if he had walked in and Director Harrington had been here, he wouldn't have hired her. He would have been working with her. If he had walked in and our director of public works, he wouldn't have been hiring that person. He would have been working with that person. So I don't see why we have to draw the line in the sand and say, well, they're his staff. Yeah, we're sure, we may not find a town manager in a, a good period of time. I don't want us to be operationally deficient because we're waiting to find this miracle guy. Oh, gal.
I think, I think it was being respectful of just how, maybe because I'm the town manager now, I didn't feel like I might have the support that would, that would, I need to be the one that hired. Because it is the town manager, of course, Michelle and I are linked at the hip. So it would be the two of us that would eventually make the decision. And I, I was trying to be respectful of the rest of the council of not.
It's not a lack of respect, it's a matter of priority. And if that, if that professional that we hire is here, when that town manager comes, they're going to be professional because this is now their boss. They're not going to, I mean, I don't know professionals that I would go around saying, well, you didn't hire me, so I'm not going to work for you. That's nonsense.
No, I just wanted to give the, the new, we both talked about this, give the opportunity to the new town manager. But if the council, if I hear the council correctly tonight, or at least a majority of them, that that should be a priority, we'll engage a company, you know, tomorrow to start searching.
You mean, I, I just think, to me, we need to have utmost urgency to get some stuff done. From, from the get go, okay? Yeah, and I understand the, the respect, and I know you guys don't want to hear this, but I'll say it anyway. So when you're in the army, okay, and a new commander come in, you don't get a vote on it, okay? And the new commander comes in and says, well, Sergeant Jenkins, I don't like you, and you're, you're out. Okay, cause I said it out. Okay, so I get that, but you know, I agree. You got to be a pro and a professional to do that. And to me, the sooner the better.
And I'd like to just call it a question, like, I think we're getting off track here. As far as the agenda goes, we're talking about whether or not we're going forward with CGA. I, I think we all emailed what we would like to see as priorities for the town. Some of that was with the understanding that if we go forward with CGA, this is what we want to explore. I don't think any of that changes whether we go forward with CGA or not. But I think where we, what we're trying to decide this evening is whether we're going to renew that contract or not. Am I, am I wrong on that as far as our agenda goes and what we're trying to do here?
We left it open and, go ahead. We, we left it open to talk about priorities. It is council legislative priorities.
Okay.
That's what it, it is on our agenda. So we could, we didn't even put in legislation tonight to accept a contract. So we could have this very honest and candid conversation about where we're headed and what, what are the priorities of this council? So that is, but that's a, thank you for that, to making sure that we're staying on track with the agenda. So it is.
I mean.
Open ended.
Yeah, I mean legislative priorities, just, I mean, we could, I'm not, I don't want to cut anybody's meaning short, but legislative priorities is one realm of discussion. Where we want to see the town, as you stated, in six, eight, 10 years is a different discussion. You know, I, I want to have a fruitful discussion here as far as, like, we, we all want to talk about what we want to see as goals from the town. That's, that's fair and that's fine. But legislatively, if we're not going to kind of engage with CGA, that's a different discussion.
And, and that is true. That is true. We have to see, the one thing that we have not done recently, much to the chagrin of the Dave's, is have a sit down and say, listen, where are we going? And where are we, where are we headed? And this is what that opportunity is. With the legislative priorities, it's what can we get from January to, to April that we need? What the town needs from our legislation? If that's nothing, then that's nothing. If we're concentrating, or if we are going to forego everything in Annapolis from January to April of next year because we feel the need should be boots on the ground here, then that's a discussion.
I, I think that's really, I, I'm here, I'm going to just take issue with that comment because I think the majority of the people in this council set up our priority list, we sent it out, right? We all have priorities for the town.
Right.
To say that nobody wants to move forward from January through April.
No, 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 I'm just saying, we don't need to be in Annapolis to accomplish what we want to accomplish. That's what I'm saying. When it says legislative, legislative to me means we are going in, talking to the delegates, the state senators, the, you know, the governor on something that we need, funding we need.
Okay.
That's not saying, no, 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 we're moving forward. Is, where's our focus? Is it going to be trying to lobby, whether it is with CGA as our, the head of our, of our head, I mean, head person there? Or is it us having staff say, hey, we're, we're putting grants in, where's our priority? We all have our priorities for our town and I don't think that's going to change. I think the one question we have to ask is, do we need, do we want to engage a lobbyist to lobby and advocate for the town? Or are we going to shift focus a little bit, still work on these, but more boots on the ground instead of in Annapolis? That's, I think, what the question really is.
Okay, I think that's what my call to question was, but that, I, I agree, okay, I agree with you. And just to be clear, that I have identified legislative or otherwise priorities. Water appropriation, obviously. Infrastructure assistance through traffic relief on Charles Street, Washington Avenue, as well as focusing on making our community, community a walkable and bike friendly area. But balancing the fact that we've got a lot of increased traffic, to have increased traffic flow, preservation of open space and parks in different sections of the town, not just through the redevelopment of Will's Park, which I think will be helpful, depending on how the use is determined for our community. And creation of boundaries, this is something that Mr. Manuel brought up in one of our previous sessions at the boundary markers of the town, establishing areas of preservation and, and not development to create placemaking for our town and to preserve some of our natural habitat. So those are priorities that I think we should identify opportunities with state grants in either obtaining property for that use or getting assistance forward. Thank you.
Okay. So I think what I have heard and, you know, wait a minute, I'm going to let Michelle. Michelle, I'm going to let you kind of put it together, because I, I have been talking quite a bit.
Well, what, thank you. I've got, I've got two lists here. I've got a town priority list and legislative priority list going. Town priority list, water appropriation, purchase agreement. We're all, everyone's in agreement on that one. Identifying operational deficiencies, town operations is also in agreement. Legislative priorities. And when I, I consider legislative priorities is going to the state, going to the delegation to help us. I've got the, the police department. I don't think we got any further than that.
If, if I could add that, I agree with support is trying to make, make sure that we, the route, Maryland Charles Street, speech gate problem stays in him that, but it's.
That would be a legislative priority.
That's lobbying, you talk to the secretary of film. Because to me, that's the key that is, even though we know it's a seventy year out, out in the process, but it was cut a little bit.
Right. It could keep being cut before it even gets started.
Correct.
We don't keep it in the forefront.
Just real quick on water appropriation, this is an operational thing. We still don't have an APFO, we still don't have any kind of policy agreement with.
With respect to a water allocation that we've told anybody about and we need to develop that, in, in my view.
Well, and that's where we're stuck with the APFO. I knew that, that is, that's a priority of everybody's. It may not be listed here, but I know that it's a priority. Until we get farther with this water appropriation purchase agreement, we can't finish the APFO.
Well, but I'm told the county wants that before they even talk to us. Okay, so to me, it's the chicken and the egg.
You're correct.
But, but the issue is, okay, guys, but we still don't have water.
There is, there is a staff member at the county that.
Right.
They are pushing for that.
Correct.
And.
Okay, we could be talking till doomsday and we still won't have any permit.
True. As we're talking about legislative priorities, and I heard several members say, you know, we're paying a lobbyist seventy eight thousand dollars for the same thing that we've been doing for the last couple of years. And I hear so, some of us saying, we do need presence in Annapolis. And we do. Would we be open to seeing a different, maybe saying, okay, instead of sixty five hundred dollars a month, what can you offer us, almost like a cafeteria, I hate to say that, but for these two things, this is all that we want?
So is this a discussion for what are collectively our legislative priorities? Or is this restructuring a contract with CGA?
Well, it's to see if there's a need.
Let's be real honest, because are we here to discuss our legislative priorities? Or are we here to, to, to backdoor a way into hiring CGA for, for our lobbyists? Which, which I, I'm, I'm not against.
Right.
If you say that we need to be, we have to have somebody at the table in Annapolis in order to get funding for X, Y, and Z, that we deem we need X funding for, then that's a discussion we have. Is that the discussion we're having? Or are we trying to sit here and figure out what we want to move forward with our legislative agenda? Cause those are two entirely different questions.
I think they kind of go together because it, with our legislative priorities, if we are going to single handedly do it ourself, and that means, you know, having staff members contact people in Annapolis to do that. I, I, I think they kind of work hand in hand. Are we going to do this all solo by ourself? Or do we want a presence there? Not negotiating a contract right now, because that wouldn't be the right thing to do. But I think we need to know where we're going forward with this to either know that they, that we are going to continue a relationship with whatever that would be with a lobbyist or we're not, to help us with our legislative priorities.
You, you've gone to Annapolis multiple times, so you are a presence in Annapolis. So you go to Annapolis, Annapolis and advocate on our behalf.
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
You can continue. And you've, you've gone, so you know, we have a presence, we have you, you've been there multiple times on multiple issues. We don't have to pay, you know, the lobbyists can go, but what position does that put us in with our county commissioners and our delegation? It seems, and, and you've said the word, and I tried not to say it, but you said it, backdoor. We're doing these things backdoor and people are taking note of them. And it, and it's not the route we want to go. At least it's not the route I want to go, because we need to partner with those people in our community. We can't do things solo. And so, you know. Yeah, so that's just that. And I'm, I'm like Councilman Trial and, we need to get back to the agenda. These folk are waiting, you know, we've spent over an hour talking about this. You know, what are we trying to accomplish? And I just want to see stability within our town staff and operations.
That's. So that is, so what we have come out with is a priority, as Ms. Minor said, and water appropriation and stability for the town. That's what we're, stability for operations within the town.
And get the money that we have been, that's been allocated to us already, the one point two.
And that's already in the works. So we've taken it as far as we can take it right now until they release the funding for FY25.
So at a future work session, if I'm hearing correctly, we, we as a staff will get together with, I'm, I'm talking the staffing part, develop a plan and bring it to you to see if you want us to move forward with a recruitment plan, with a hiring plan. That's not for discussion tonight, but it sounds like that's something you want us working on and bringing back later.
I think we all said, yes, we want, we feel like we need to get.
Yeah, I think if there's, if there's gaps in, you know, if there's, if there's a body that needs to be filled today, then absolutely. Fill it today. I mean, in a perfect world, yeah, the new incoming town manager would be able to pick all of their lieutenants. But I, I, I agree with Councilman Brian Ward. People come into positions all the time and there's existing personnel and you figure it out. And, and I would much rather fill positions that are critical and much needed because we're just starting the process for the town manager. We could be six months before, before that person walks in the door. And we can't wait six months to backfill.
So we'll, we'll be bringing the Department of Planning Director. I'm sure we're going to have to come back with you on that, we need to talk about that. That position's actually harder to fill than a town manager position. So we may need to do a recruitment for that. I don't think we can put ads in papers or in professionals and get that. So we may be coming back in the next month or so with that, after we've talked it over and maybe consulted with a few people to see.
But in the interim, we do have an amazing person that is quite experienced, that is.
Very enthusiastic.
Very enthusiastic. And Councilman Jenkins, you will love that she has read not only our comp plan from, from top to back, but also the strategic plan. Yep, yep. Yes, yes, yes.
She questioned us.
She did?
I don't know if we passed the test.
Yeah, I was like, woo, some of those things I didn't even know.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so, okay, we've got our.
And we've got marching orders.
Marching orders.
All right.
Going forward.
Thank you very much for exactly what a work session is supposed to be about on that. And honesty and, and done it very respectfully. And we've got, we've got to, moving forward. So, all right, you're still awake back there. Next on our agenda is the water meter purchase and Michelle?
Yes, so I'm sure you've had time to read the memo, but I'll just abbreviate it a little bit. The Public Works Department likes to purchase ahead and the more that they purchase, the better, the better price that we get, obviously. And with Pine Grove exploding like they are, we like to have water meters on hand because of the supply chain. And who knows what's going to happen in January again. So Public Works Department is asking to purchase three hundred water meters of various sizes, five inches and three quarter inch water meters. It is a sole source and for the total of the three hundred meters is.
It's five hundred meters. They have three hundred in stock.
I'm sorry, five hundred, yes.
Yep.
I'm sorry, thank you.
No worries.
Two hundred and eighty six thousand nine hundred and eighty five dollars. But we do also have a plan to recoup the extra money. But we do also have a plan to recoup the extra money that this is going to cost through raising the fees, the schedule moving forward.
All right, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this was not a budgeted item?
No. Well, it was a budgeted item, but yes, of course.
Do you want to come up here, Danny? Come on.
So we do budget the meters. And Ashley, let me give you a little background on how we do the meters. So since the meters are really assets until we sell them, they're an asset on our books until we actually sell them. And at the end of the year, we look at how many we sold and then make sure the revenue matches so that we don't inflate the expenses because we haven't sold the meters. But the issue with the fee is because when I did the fee chart, I took what we paid before. I increased it based on what I think it was going to increase. But when we actually got the pricing, it was twenty nine percent higher than what our previous one was. So in order to make sure that we still cover our costs, and then I increased another three percent to cover various staff costs so that we're not putting that in rate, I add three percent to it. But in order to make sure we cover our costs, have that three percent, we've got to increase the fee by thirteen percent.
What fee are you talking about increasing?
The, so on the fee schedule, developers, when they build their house, and we put the meter and they pay for that meter.
Right, I'm just saying you didn't, you didn't say, you just kept saying increase the fees. You didn't say which fees.
The meter, the meter fee.
So when you did your projections, you said it was a twenty nine percent increase. What percentage did you increase the previous purchase or buy?
So I looked at that, I believe it was six percent, and then I added the three percent on top of that. Because last billing, we paid four hundred and forty five dollars for the meters. Now the meters are costing five hundred and seventy three dollars and ninety seven cents. So in order to make sure we cover our costs, so the citizens aren't paying for these new homes meters, we need to increase the fee. Now, I'm not too concerned about increasing it right away because we have those other three hundred meters that we bought at the lower rate. So we're still going to recoup our costs in those, but we do need to change this fee. And I'm proposing to change it when we get the rate study finished. And also, we need, at the same time, we're going to look at the major facility fees because that also needs to be increased. So I propose that we do that all at once. But I just wanted to make sure when you guys approve this purchase that you realize it's also going to come with a meter fee rate increase.
And that'll be done during the red up, the regular budget process.
I want to do it before that. Yes. I, because I don't want the citizens, pretty much if we don't raise it, then the citizens are paying for the meters for these homes. And like I said, we have, we probably have less than three hundred now. But we've, we bought those at the lower price.
And we have storage for these?
So I have one more question for you. So we were buying different sized meters. How did we come up with the size meters for these homes?
So I guess it'd be in the blue plant, blueprints of the house that's being built to sustain the might, the right amount of water pressure, the the flow, more or less, how many gallons per minute it flows. So I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm assuming it's in the blue plants when they spec the house out. And those are the two common sizes that we use.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Ms. Larson, thank you for explaining the meter fee increase. Is there anything that would prevent the developers to not just pass that fee increase on to the new homeowners?
I mean.
That's up to them.
Isn't that what typically happens? So the residents are paying, new residents are paying for it anyway. It's just that we're distinguishing between new residents for new purchases versus current residents for purchases.
The current residents would have made purchase. They already have the meter.
Okay, so either way.
Yeah, but if lumber goes up, the purchasers.
I know, but we're not in charge of the lumber.
No, we're not.
Right, okay.
We're, we're just, so when I put together the budget, the one thing I look at is the cost of these meters and how much we're going to charge. Because it does take some staff time, and that's why I increased the three percent, but that then doesn't go into the rate. Because we're recouping that when we sell these meters. I guess what we're trying to do is make sure that the rates reflect the cost of operations of providing the services, not these additional purchases to provide a new meter. That's on the person building the house.
The only question I have is, is the thirteen percent increase, is that enough to cover the increase in the cost of the 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 purchase, the new purchase price of the pro meter?
No, actually, the thirteen percent is what is, yes.
The new, okay.
Yes, yeah, what I did is I.
As long as, if I'm hearing you correctly, as long as you're saying, you know, so that the current, the current citizens are not subsidizing the purchase.
Yeah, because this is for the meter and the node, and then we also have the setter. But the setter cost that we got didn't increase, so I'm not worried about that. So this is the only increase we need to make sure we do.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. So when do you anticipate actually changing the rate fee in the, in the, in the ordinance, on the budget?
Well, I'm hoping we get the study done, but I did want to wait till we do our capital improvement meeting so I can give an.
January.
Well, no, that's at the end of this month.
End of this month, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that we can give them a projection for the, what the rates may increase before we do that. So before the end of this year. So we need to, based on the rate we're selling them.
So you're going to go back and do an amendment.
Correct.
To the rate fees.
Yes, the fee schedule, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So I'm looking for a consensus this evening to move this to legislation. Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Yes. Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you very much. And that brings us, oh, don't go anywhere. Okay, that brings us to our next and and. Acting Director of Public Works, you are free to go. Finance Committee. Ms. Larson, it's you again.
So back on September tenth during the meeting, there was a discussion regarding forming a finance committee. So attached is a draft of an ordinance for discussion with council on the formation of this finance committee.
All right, questions?
The only recommendation I have is you only have one finance person. That you have more than one finance person because you don't want that one finance person to persuade the other business person. And I can't remember the other committee member.
Financial planning.
Somebody in the city or something like that in the resident. So I would suggest that you have another expert in finance to help balance the conversation.
Um, I actually thought about that originally had to, but then there was a concern of would we be able to fill all these five members? And that was my concern. I don't want to have it so that we have two that has to meet this, but yet all the applications don't have professional experience. And we specifically put professional experience in there because we don't want somebody who may be just working volunteering and like managing or accounting for the funds or anything like that. So we wanted to make sure it's professional experience. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to make, take the chance of not having every member filled by putting that in. But I would say that those with those professional experience would end up having priority because they have experience related to the committee or the the way this.
I think you take a chance because we take a chance with anything that we do like that. And I'm gonna differ with you slightly. I just, I hired someone who said they knew budgeting and finance. And they don't, they didn't know budgeting and finance. They said that that was their job and they did not. And they didn't last. They couldn't handle it. So I just think, really rethink it. I think it is important to have two of, two professionals so that one doesn't steer the conversation. Because if you have that one person, those other committee members might have a conversation, but they're going to typically go with the expert. So just think about it. That would be my only ask. Everything else I thought looked good.
Does it read at least one or does?
At least one, I believe.
I thought, yeah, so at least one. So if we could gear it towards two, I mean, we could change that language to a minimum of two, or we could. I know we're trying to balance five people on that. And we don't want, and the one discussion that we had had is what happens if all five of them are one thing and we're lacking in the others? And that was the concern you just expressed as well. So if you, if you do at least two, or do you feel more comfortable saying two? Because at least one means you got one there. Could be two, could be five. What are the parameters that you put on there? At least, I mean, do you make it a hard two? Which I don't disagree whatsoever, especially since you do this.
Committee, that's the only reason budget oversight by reporting.
If you put at least two, I would assume you have to at least have two. So regardless, you still have to have two.
Right, so you could put at least two at that instead of writing two, which is a solid box in, right?
I, I would prefer more than one. Actually, I would prefer everybody to have some type of financial background. Is the preference, but I'm not sure because this is new. Who's going to be wanting to join the committee and that? And I didn't want to block out and not be able to fill every position because we put that requirement on. But I definitely would say that regardless, and maybe reward this, that those with that type of background in budgeting, financial forecasting analysis have priority over the others, except for the small business one, because I think it's very important to have somebody who's an owner of a small business on there.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that clarification, because I would concur. We need that expertise. I'm just, so what is the source of this ordinance? I mean, you must have gotten it from someplace. I mean, what was the source of this ordinance for a financial committee?
I actually read it in a budget book.
On vacation. That was her reading.
Well, kudos, okay, because, never mind, I won't go there. And then I know on the twenty one point two composition and it says line forty eight, number one, it says financial planning. So what, what does that? What does that mean to you? Because I have a different view of what financial planning means.
Um, basically forecasting, understanding where we're at, based on what decisions are being made, where we're going to be, kind of looking ahead. And I think we definitely need a committee that looks five years down the line.
Okay, because I I misinterpreted that.
Oh.
I thought of a personal financial planner for a homeowner or investor. Okay, so you clarify. So that's your intent.
Mm hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Valid point, and I think that that this ordinance should be amended to say at least two members shall be have professional experience. People can be very creative nowadays, especially with the way that resumes are out there. I don't think having Boy Scout Committee Finance makes me qualified here. So that is why I do like professional experience, although I did think that was professional experience. But and then it is going to be up to, you know, whoever is is reviewing this to make sure that they have the qualifications. Are there any other amendments that you would suggest before we see if this is worthy of moving on? Okay, so I'm going.
Let me, let me ask you a question here. So is there? I mean, typically, I guess my question is about the mayor appointing these versus town manager. I don't, I don't know that one's better than the other. I would, I would suspect that unlike some of our other committees, where it's almost pro forma, somebody gives a basic introduction or information. I would expect Town Council and future Town Council to kind of look at this with a little bit more scrutiny, given the weight of the actual purpose and scope of the committee. And so I'm I.
It.
You know.
Councilman Trolinger, it is the same, like you said, with the other ones, but it's not the mayor solely doing that. It's the mayor and the town council. The way this would work, and correct me, Ms. Larson, if I'm wrong, is the recommended, the recommendations will come to the mayor and town council. I will make the recommendation based on their recommendation. I will not be, as mayor, have anything to do outside of the duties of the council. So it will be brought forth to us and based on their recommendation. And so I will say, council, I make a recommendation, blah, blah, blah. And then the council will say yay or nay. That's the way I envision that because good night, I do not want that responsibility.
It's heavy, right?
Yeah, that's a lot. This is a really important, not that the other committees are not, but this is really neat to see the, the commit, the community coming together and having a say in how they want their money, their taxes spent. So that's where I see that.
I wasn't going to add, but since Councilman Bryant Ward gave me the, the dirty look because she knew what I was thinking probably, but no. Karina, and I'm almost going to answer my own question with my question is, would you want somebody from the council on there, just like we have somebody on the ethics, on planning and so, you know, is that something? Because I agree with with Councilman Trolinger's. Should somebody from the council be on this board or on this committee as well? Or in in your looking at it, are you saying, because I would defer to your judgment, are you looking and going, no, I need five people completely removed from you guys and and.
Yes, so actually I thought about that. And really what my idea of this committee was to get more public engagement and get what they want. They aren't making decisions. They're making recommendations.
Gotcha.
You guys are making the decisions. And that's why after discussions, I, we decided it may be better not to have a town council because ultimately they're going to make the decision. These are just recommendations from the community.
Okay, okay, yeah, I can see it.
Thank you for that question. Thank you for doing this, but you, for me, you just said one of the key words, public engagement. That's important. Thank you.
All right, with that said, I'm looking for a consensus to move this to legislation with the amendment as suggested by Councilwoman Bryant Ward to have at least two members shall have professional or educational budgeting, financial planning with that amendment. Councilman Winkler?
Yes.
Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, yes. Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Fantastic. All right, so that brings us to our legislation. Resolution twenty four dash twenty one, water meter purchase. Ms. Minor?
Madam Mayor, resolution concerning water meter purchase for the purpose of authorizing the chief executive officer to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the purchase of water meters and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash twenty one as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would move to adopt resolution twenty four dash twenty one, water meter purchase as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our other piece of legislation, ordinance twenty four dash seventeen for introduction.
Madam Mayor, an ordinance concerning finance committee for the purpose of establishing finance committee for town of Playa to specify the composition and terms of the office of members of the committee to specify the duties of the committee and all matters generally related thereto with amended line number forty eight for two members.
Thank you very much, and hopefully we'll see this next time we meet as well for our consideration. New business. New business. Councilman Winkler?
Something that, that I'll just kind of re, um, let the rest of the council know. I was invited to participate in a discussion with some members of the county regarding, um, the development for the future library expansion, um, and then, uh, whether or not the, the, county was looking for just some discussion from, from various entities on whether the home place, which is the old, the, the house, um, uh, on the corner there, um, should be raised or saved or just to kind of get some community involvement. And so there was a little, a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth. But the one thing that came out of it, and I think this is something that kind of, and I almost brought it up when there, earlier discussion about legislative priorities, but I kind of wanted to wait until for this. The, the glowing need that I saw in this discussion was the town has to have a very, uh, clear, concise vision plan, which I think we, we have, have established that. There needs to be, and I know Councilman Jenkins is, and I have spoken about this, is there needs to be some economic development, whether it's a commission, whether it's a position in the town. There needs to be somebody within the town that is going around. Because one of the things that came out of it was the ideas of why isn't the town doing this with this house? Why isn't the town, you know, we're looking for this avenue, this venue, this type of facility. And they were great. Excuse me, they were all great ideas. But I think that we lack in the town, we lack somebody in, in a role to go out and find these things out, to, to encourage businesses to relocate, um, you know? Hey, we've got a vacancy in this building. Why don't I reach out to this person and see if I can have a discussion of what it would look like to try to convince them to move into the town? You know, we, we talk about this vibrancy of the town of, of La Plata downtown. And I think, you know, there's two things. You have to have places to go to and you have to have, people have to live somewhere where they can go from. And I think merging those two things together, that's where that EDC component comes in. And, and I just thought it was, you know, as, as we discussed, of opportunities of what, what could be done with the house in conjunction with the library. That was what was kind of glowing was that, that the town lacks somebody as a point person to, to work with both the county and, and the community to ensure things get developed and maybe developed in a little more, um, quicker fashion. So I thought that was just something I, you know, I, I kind of made some notes and said, you know, that's something that we needed to, I needed to bring back to, um, the council and, you know, hopefully like our IT department, um, I think that's something that maybe we need to revisit in the, in a future budget session as to whether or not that, that position can be garnered.
Quick comment. Uh, we didn't plan this, but I'm glad you brought that up because what you talked about from my perspective is, is needed. But you, you, you had some key phrases about vitality and houses and what, that's called placemaking. Okay. And then that's what economic development is now. So I have, uh, I'm, I'm working on a presentation to talk about that. And I'll bring it forward to the council. I'm developing a presentation to justify that kind of function in the town. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Trolinger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a report, but I do have a request. Um, we've talked about this in the past a little bit. I'd like to, um, maybe get with you, Ms. Minor, about getting a, uh, community discussion point with regards to, um, separate meters. Um, I've had a lot of outpouring of, of questions as to why we don't do that in the town from a lot of folks that have relocated from other places where it was really not an issue, especially with our water rates going up. Um, there's been a lot of heartache over that, um, specifically in agricopia and throughout the town, even people that are not in Ward Two, which I serve. So I think it'd be good to have some discussion with our public works department because I know, um, in the past, there's, it's been looked at, um, it's been discussed. Um, but I think it'd be good to have a community discussion on that issue. So maybe we could look at some dates moving forward and kind of come up with some kind of itinerary to have fruitful structure for something like that. Um, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
So I have no updates because we didn't have a meeting, but I wanted to go back to your conversation about that house. The historic preservation committee came before us and I thought that house was gonna be picked up and moved. It was not designated as historic, so I thought that house should have been gone by now.
So it is in the historic preservation, the, the, if, if I have my facts correct, after the twenty-two thousand and two tornado, there were certain areas in all along Washington Avenue and was designated a historic area. The feasibility, I think that the county is looking at is ten, the cost to move that house is, is probably cost prohibitive. Um, that, that's one of the things. What the county was looking for was input from, and I was just there because it's in Ward One and, and just there. And it wasn't necessarily to decide whether the house should be raised or whether it should be preserved, you know, um, you know? But one thing that came out of the, to a T was, you know, we kind of walked around the room. There was about twenty people that went out. And to a T, they all said, the resounding opinion was that they're tired of watching buildings get torn down for losing the image of the town. What brought them to the town of La Plata was one, was one, um, ideal or idea. But we are slowly getting away from that. And they're tired, and this was not, these, these were not my set. These were the statements from, from everybody there was the majority of people were, were tired of seeing houses and buildings destroyed and not being replaced with something that they think adds to the charm of La Plata. And so what I think the county was looking for is, okay, so tearing this building down is not necessarily, if it can be repurposed, what could it be repurposed and still, you know, in conjunction with the library? I think that, you know, while we've, you know, owned the property and we've leased it back to the, to the county, I think the county's just saying, and look, we want to make sure that we're doing what the people in the community want it done. And if there's a chance that this can be saved and this can be repurposed without using or, or without, um, making it a viable option to save it and reuse it, that, that should be looked at. And, and I'll use, I use this analogy only in, in, because I shared it with the, the group that we met. Is some years ago, there was an old school, one-room schoolhouse on Turkey Hill Road that, um, was moved up next to North Point. Ironically enough, that school was Winkler Shop School. Okay. And it was a one, it was a blacksmith shop. And when they built North Point High School, they liked the idea of moving this old blacksmith shop next to North Point to show where the town had been and where, or where the county had been and where, where it is now. And I think that's where the county was kind of looking at is to say, okay, how can we mold this into part of this development if we build the new library here? Is that a viable option or does it need to be, does it need to be gone?
Yeah, I was, I was clear on what you were saying, but I'm saying we had that discussion. And at the time, the former director of public works showed us how it couldn't work because of the driveway and how the library was supposed to be seated on that property. And we needed that for parking and everything else.
I think the county is, is reevaluating.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that because the county wanted it vacated so that they could demolish.
Thank you.
Right? So there was a tenant, now they weren't paying, right? But they made their, their intent clear. So I'm glad they've backtracked and taken community input.
Thank you, um, Councilman Trolinger for saying backpack, backtrack, because that's exactly what happened. So without me trying to, I'm trying to be politically correct.
It is, it could just be, you know, lip service or, or you know what, we'll, we'll do it before we, before we decide ultimately what, you know, the original intent was. But I, I think that the fact that they asked and they got feedback that maybe they hadn't really thought they were gonna get.
They did.
Could you please tell us who was at that meeting as far as departments? Because I think that is, or in, for engagement? Cause I think that is really, um, powerful. They, they went and stotted.
Let me go and see, let me see if I can pull this up. Um.
And it was the county that invited. It, it was nothing to do with the town because as we know, the town has, um, in ninety-nine years, we'll care. Right now, we don't have a say as a.
It was about twenty-one, um, um, somebody from the historic, uh, preservation committee. Yes. Um, the EDC, um, somebody from the College of Southern Maryland, um, there were some community outreach, each community outreach people, um, Director Phipps was there, um, um, so one of the town, local town businesses, um, it, it was, it was predominantly county. County people, um, you know, planning and zoning, et cetera. Um, just, but you know what? But I think that the fact that they reached out, um, we'll see, we'll see, we'll see what comes out of it. But again, and that's, that's a whole other discussion. The thing that I got out of it was that we need to have somebody in the town who is more proactively engaged in saying, you know what, let me reach out to this person or this, this business. And hey, have you thought about relocating to, you know, to this area? Um, you know, and, and I think that's, you know, I, I think that's what I gained out of that, out of that meeting more than anything.
Thank you very much. Um, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. I have no formal report, but I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, um, I'm a member of an organization called Strong Towns. They're now nationwide and they do, uh, a lot of, uh, activity about what town should be. And they're looking, and they have five core things to work on. One of ways is safe and productive streets, which is right up the two proclamations today. And so about a year and a half ago, they started a program called Crash Analysis Studio. So they'll unfortunately follow up with a, an accident, and they call it accident, a tragedy where somebody's hit or killed riding a bike or walking. And then they convene a expert committee and they have a discussion of what caused this. And they look at the engineering, they look at the environmental conditions, they look at the police report, they look at all conditions. And they come up with recommendations on how to prevent that. So because I'm a member, not because I'm special, they had a, they're releasing a, a, a report, uh, on the fifteenth, but they had a pre, pre, pre press conference to talk about the report and their findings. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and there's no objections. I'm gonna go ahead and when it's, when it's released on the fifteenth, I'm gonna email that to you. It's only twenty-eight pages. Okay. Because I, I just want to highlight that because if you don't know by now, I'm kind of fixated on this issue of pedestrian safety. Cause now I'm also volunteering with the Sierra Club on the transportation committee and then we have a regional group, five oh one C three, they're working on safety. So I'm a little fixated on it. However, having said that, I, I think it would be worthwhile for us, if you, if you're so inclined, to look at that and see how we could, um, against operationally in the future, start really talking and in conjunction with the federal grant, really start talking about neighborhood techniques, low costs, quick projects, painted sidewalks or other things like that, that we could go into the neighborhoods and help folks. Cause I'm getting a lot of angst in Clark's Run about, and we all get it. I'm not complaining it, I'm agreeing with them. So I just want to bring that to your attention and hopefully we can have a future, future work session where we talk about this issue. And there are low-cost techniques and things that communities can do. And what prompted this is that they want to put speed humps in or speed bumps in Clark's Run. But that's a good, healthy discussion and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for my report, um, over the weekend, I, I have to give a shout out to our chief. He was the keynote speaker of the first annual, first, the inaugural, I should say, the inaugural, um, Autism Symposium that was held, uh, up in Waldorf. And it was really, um, he did an amazing job. Um, but what a great conversation that was had. It was from eleven to three. And one of the things that really was impactful was that, um, the chief had two of his officers and, uh, Kim there demonstrating the project lifesaver. A lot of people had come down from Prince George's County to attend this and they were absolutely amazed at how this works. And, um, the police officers actually went and hid one of the, the bracelets out there and had somebody take the apparatus to find them. And it was, they were in awe for that. So he did an amazing job and supported, um, this great, um, awareness of autism and those living with, um, intellectual disabilities. On Sunday, if you missed the Fall Festival, it was amazing. It was great, great weather. So thank you to Colleen. Our next event is coming up on Saturday, the twenty-sixth, which is Trick or Treat Trail from twelve to three. But check the town notes calendar for, um, for more information. And with that, that's gonna conclude, um, my report for now, but we're not done yet. We have a reason to go into closed session, so I will entertain a motion to go into closed sessions, if it is the will of the council.
There's all my stuff up, so I have to, you have to read.
I, well, I will make a motion. I will make a motion that I move that, uh, putting the statutory authority to close session, three dash three oh five B ten I to discuss public security if the public body determines that public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or public security, including the deployment of fire and police services. The topic is crime trend update. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Um, uh, Director Phipps, could you do a roll call, please? If you are in favor, please say aye. If not, please say nay to go into closed session.
Mayor James?
Aye.
Councilman Winkler?
Aye.
Councilman Trolinger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. And with that, I move to adjourn this meeting at seven forty-seven. Thank you.
Give you a shot, you're on your town minutes.
How is?
What is that?